Okay. All right, we will reconvene the special meeting. Mr. City Attorney, is there any final action to report out? Okay, then we will adjourn the special meeting and call to order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council on Tuesday, June 25th, 2024. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Yeah, council members Chalamchela.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Roarbaugh.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
And Kozlowski is absent.
If all, all please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that brings us to business from the floor. This is the public's opportunity to address the council on items that are not on the agenda, but please be aware that state law prohibits us from deliberating or taking action on items that are not on the agenda. If you would like to speak during business from the floor or any item, if you would please fill out a blue speaker card that's on the table in the back, hand it over to Sergeant Galovich over here, and we give every speaker three minutes. So I know it doesn't seem like a lot of time, but it'll be plenty of time for you to get your point across, so please be respectful of that if you can. Madam Clerk, do we have folks wanting to speak during business from the floor?
Yes, you have three requests to speak this evening under Business from the Floor. Our first speaker will be Margie Donovan, and she will be followed by Shelby Love.
Good evening, Margie.
Good evening. Can you give me a second, please? Don't set the timer yet.
We will, we will.
Mugs come. Sit. Down. Good boy. Rest. All right. Honorable council members and Vice Mayor Aquino, would you please give me, let me know when two minutes are up since I cannot see the clock?
Will do.
I am delighted to be here in person tonight. Thank you to Jackie. Thank you to all the garbage on Facebook that's connected us, and she said I needed to be here in person, and I'm happy to be here. I first want to begin with acknowledging Vice Mayor Aquino and Code Enforcement Officer Pete Picardo, who actively helped me and my neighbors get a homeless encampment out from behind Sprouts. And once we got in touch with these two individuals, it was less than 36 hours and the encampment was gone, so thank you. We ran some real fire respecter over the winter. I want to talk about the Folsom Police Department dispatch. I'm very concerned. I made three calls to dispatch regarding this homeless encampment. Dispatch would not take a report, said it wasn't illegal. My neighbor did the same thing. We worked with store management because it is private property, and Doug, the manager of Sprouts, finally contacted the dispatch, and they said they had received no calls about this encampment. This is a serious concern that they won't log our calls about homeless encampments. It is not my duty to send an officer out or determine whether an officer goes out. It is my duty as a citizen of this city to file a report and have them take that report and do with what they want, but to tell the store manager that they got no calls was a straight-out lie. I'm here to talk about a very grave concern of mine. As a homeowner in this city for 15 years, I have no access to our city website. It is not compliant under ADA standards. I've worked with Chris. Tonight, today, this packet I asked for last week, I generally get most of the information the day that the packet comes out.
Margie, that's two minutes down.
Thank you. Today, we got an email, another blind woman and myself, asking if something was accessible. It is not our job to determine accessibility in this city. I'm sorry to tell our council members, I am taking legal action against the city. I have been here 15 years asking for accessibility, and I have no idea what's on the agenda tonight, so I can't speak on agenda items because the city and the city manager and the ADA manager fails to do the necessary things to accommodate low vision of blind people in the city. Talked about the website. That is all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming out, Margie, and if there's something further in the agenda that you want to speak about, just raise your hand and I will bring you down, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker will be Shelby Love, who will be followed by Michael Harris.
Good evening.
I've never done this before.
That's okay.
I'm a little nervous. My name is Shelby Love. I am a board member of the Friends of Folsom Zoo. When I was three years old, I had my first, my third birthday party at the Folsom Zoo. It is one of my earliest and most treasured memories. I remember so many things about that day, including the hot pink birthday cake my mom made me. But most of all, I remember the animals. That experience, in combination with many-class field trips to the Folsom Zoo Sanctuary, cultivated a lifelong passion for conservation, science, and animals. Now, as a mother of two, I have the immense privilege to bring my own children to the Folsom Zoo Sanctuary and share with them my love of animals. My son Levi, who's two years old, loves birds of all kind but is still learning the differences between the species, so he lovingly refers to them all as geese. My daughter Hannah, who is 10 months old, loves the wolf hybrids, probably because they remind her of her own doggies at home. Tonight, as you consider the vote for the budget for the city of Folsom, I urge you to consider the legacy of the Folsom Zoo Sanctuary, to remember the invaluable educational experiences that it provides for so many children, and the power that it holds to inspire the next generation of scientists, veterinarians, and conservationists in the city of Folsom. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelby.
Okay, our next speaker will be Michael Harris, and then Michael Harris will be followed by Shannon Dillon.
Good evening, Michael.
Good evening. Vice Mayor, Council, Executive Staff. It is, it is just an amazing opportunity for me to just say thank you to the city of Folsom and the community. It was the largest Juneteenth celebration. Yes. Yes. And what is so bittersweet is the history gets, you know, changed around with a man running around with a gun. I'm not going to argue with him about history. The park ranger, the one that I don't know well. If I know it well, like the police chief, I may, and show him some stuff. But, but the blessing is that it was my god hot, like 105 hot. And those of you who have been on the beach, it gets hotter on the beach before you get to the water. And it was just amazing. So what, what was missing was the official Juneteenth flag. They wouldn't fly it because they don't think that I know what I'm talking about, although I'm on the National Board. But this is the actual Juneteenth flag from 1997, from Boston, Massachusetts. Ben Haddick and the team that created Juneteenth. And I'm going to try to figure out how to get on our schedule. The Queen Mother of Juneteenth is Opal Lee, and I'm sure y'all have seen her walk in. She's 97 years old in Fort Worth, Texas, and she actually received the, the bill, 435, by Senator Harkin out of Massachusetts to establish the federal holiday. So as I've been saying for a little while now, I understand the budget concerns, and so at some point, we're going to have Juneteenth an official holiday for the city of Folsom and in alignment with Rancho Cordova in Sack County. And from the backside of Mount Shasta to down in San Diego in the mountains, we've been up and down the state celebrating Juneteenth. And next year, we're going to start asking for money because my children think I'm crazy and worried about their retirement and, you know. But I said, just come with me, you'll get to see the state, it's a beautiful state. But I'm going to leave this, I don't know who with, so maybe next year, we'll have a flag raising ceremony, and this flag will be here with the city of Folsom forever. So I will.
Yeah, give it a go.
Thank you, and I mean, I just live right, right across the street. It doesn't make sense to me to go. We were down in Glendale, and folks is like, where are you from? I said, Folsom. They're like, aren't you far from home? I said, but it's not Texas. We're trying to celebrate.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay, our next speaker is a caller on the line. That will be Shannon Dillon. Shannon, when you're ready, go ahead, and I'll start your timer.
Hi, great. Thank you so much for taking my comment. Good evening. I, I just have two things. One is just to make sure everyone is aware or ask if something can be done about the, I live near Ernie Sheldon, the Park on Natomah Station, and there are, regularly, we go over there early in the morning, and we walk through, we go through with our dogs, my dog, and she, we, there's always somebody, the homeless people camp out in the bathrooms, and we've seen needles there, but also, like, you just can't even get into the bathrooms. Like, the bathrooms will be locked, and then a few minutes later, someone will cruise on out, and it's not like just that person was there because they have all their belongings, right? They have their bicycle and all their clothing and stuff, so it's like clearly somewhere people are using as a temporary, you know, as a housing. So I'm kind of concerned, I'm really concerned about that because it makes it a lot more frightening to go over there, especially with the needles. I'm worried about them for my dog. And we've, you know, we've trash, they've left trash around, although really, it's a lot about the bathroom and the needles that I'm so concerned. Second, I, the one thing I was able to read for tonight, and thanks for help trying to get the documents to us in an accessible format, the one thing I was able to read was about all the trees and that you're going back for a third time to take more trees. And I'd just like to say that I moved to Folsom and enjoyed all the green space, and I feel like it just keeps getting removed, so I'm hoping there will be a plan for replacing some of the stuff that keeps getting removed. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
You have no further requests to speak under Business from the floor.
Okay, was there anybody else in the chamber who wanted to speak to Business from the floor? Okay, seen no one. Thank you very much. Let's see, any agenda updates, Mr. City Attorney? Okay, so if you didn't hear that, number three, which is about the landmark trees, that is going to be continued to a future meeting, so thank you. If you will call the first item, please.
Yeah, your first item this evening is scheduled presentation, item number one. This is the proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming July 3rd through the 5th as Western Rodeo Days in the city of Folsom. Brian Martel, come on down. I believe this year's grand marshal.
Okay, well, as you can see, Councilmember Roarbaugh and I did not get the memo that we were supposed to be wearing patriotic hats tonight, but our colleagues.
You have one.
So this is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming July 3rd through 5th, 2024, as Western Rodeo Days in the city of Folsom. Whereas the city of Folsom proudly recognizes Folsom's Western heritage and acknowledges the benefits of preserving the traditions and customs of the city's history. And whereas for over 60 years, the Folsom Pro Rodeo has been a beloved tradition, bringing together rodeo enthusiasts, families, and the Folsom community for unforgettable experiences. And whereas the rodeo began as a love for Folsom's rich Western heritage and as a way to honor the family cattle ranches which created the community. And whereas this year's event at the Dan Russell Arena marks the 63rd anniversary of the Folsom Pro Rodeo. And whereas event highlights include traditional rodeo events such as saddle and bareback bronc riding, steer wrestling, team roping, barrel racing, bull riding, performances by the Painted Ladies Drill Team, Flying Cowboys Motocross, Rodeo Clowns, nightly fireworks, mutton busting, and live music in the saloon under the stars. And whereas in honor of the traditional patriotic theme, the Folsom Pro Rodeo will celebrate within arena spectacular fireworks. And whereas the Folsom Pro Rodeo involves the assistance of hundreds of volunteers and a tremendous amount of community support. Now therefore, on behalf of our mayor and the city of Folsom, I do proclaim July 3rd through 5th, 2024, as Western Rodeo Days in Folsom, and call upon all citizens to join in the festivities celebrating the Folsom Pro Rodeo, and I want to give special recognition to this year's grand marshal, Brian Martel.
All I can say is when you put together best volunteers, best staff with the Folsom Chamber and all of the community, you have the best event in the Tri-County region. That's the, you know, once again, the Folsom Pro Rodeo 63rd year. So I'm proud to represent, and I hope to see everybody out there for the 63rd rodeo.
Okay. Let's call the next item, please.
Your next item this evening is your consent calendar, and as a reminder, item three has been continued, and you do have a request to pull item number four for comment.
Okay, are there any questions on items two, four, five, or six from the council?
I'll go ahead and move to items two, five, and six.
Okay, we can do that. We have a motion for two, five, and six. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Challenger, a little second. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Chalamchela.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Roarbaugh.
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes.
Okay, item number four is resolution number 11219. This is a resolution amending previous resolution number 11110 and enacting the annual inflationary adjustment for city user fees for selected city services. You have a request from Barbara Leary to pull this item for comment. Barbara, come on down. No, it says, it says number four. Which, I'm sorry, which did you want to speak on?
Okay, but that's being continued.
And you don't want to speak on item four? Okay.
I'll go ahead and move resolution 11219.
I'll second on that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Chalamchela.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Roarbaugh.
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes. Okay, next item, please.
Okay, that takes you to old business. Item number seven, this is resolution number 11210, a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2425 operating and capital budgets for the city of Folsom, the Successor Agency, the Folsom Public Financing Authority, and the Folsom Ranch Public Financing Authority, and this was continued from the June 11 meeting.
Good evening, everyone. As you'll remember, at the city council's May 28 regular meeting, I presented the city manager's fiscal year 2425 proposed operating and capital budgets alongside Chief Financial Officer Stacy Tumani. I then returned to the city council on June 11 with another comprehensive presentation addressing specific questions the council posed about the proposed budget in the days following May 28. My department heads and I also answered many questions that came up at your June 11 meeting. The council then asked that staff come back again at the next meeting, which is tonight, and said that another presentation from staff would not be necessary, which is why my remarks will be very short tonight to yield as much time as possible to the council for your deliberations. Tonight provides another opportunity for the council to adopt the budget. So just as a reminder, the major elements of the city manager's proposed budget are as follows. One park planner, two primarily focused on the Folsom Plan area. One park maintenance worker, one primarily focused on the Folsom Plan area. Two public works, street maintenance workers, one, two primarily focused on the Folsom Plan area. A homeless outreach team in the police department comprised of one police sergeant, one new police corporal, and four police officers. Three of those police officer positions would be funded by the city council, allowing me as a city manager to implement what's called an over-hire policy in the police department. On those six positions in the police department, I want to make very clear that my desire would be to deploy those officers where needs are greatest in close cooperation and collaboration with Chief Hillman. For example, available officers could first staff beat five, which is south of 50, and then the homeless outreach team could be built from there, or vice versa. And the hot team could go up or down in size depending on how the challenge itself goes up and down. The budget proposes positions, not specific assignments. One fire division chief specifically focused on training in our fire department. Community development department software upgrades to improve our customer service and efficiency and election costs in the clerk's office because this is an election year. In addition, I have proposed four one-time expenditures out of the city's unassigned fund balance. Those expenditures include renovation of Kids Play Park, also called Castle Park, replacement of kitchen equipment, tables and chairs at the Folsom Community Center, replacement of malfunctioning doors and the lighting control system at the Folsom Public Library, replacement of the city's primary data storage system that has reached end of life. And I want to emphasize that I only proposed use of unassigned fund balance for one time, that is to say, non-recurring expenditures that I felt were particularly urgent, and I only proposed a total of expenditures that if approved by the city council would keep the city's fund balance within the city council's newly adopted financial policy regarding the reserve. That policy says that the city shall maintain an unassigned fund balance or reserve for the general fund within a range of 17% to 20% of the annual operating expenditures of the city. And as Ms. Tumani and I have previously shared, the rest of the budget that I proposed is largely comprised of expenditures covered by enterprise funds or general fund expenditures that have just increased due to rising costs, whether salary benefits or true-ups of other items. Here are the general fund expenditures that fall into that last category, and you'll see them listed there. So next steps. As I shared, I brought you the city manager's proposed budget on May 28. Your public hearing on the budget was on June 11, and that was your first opportunity to adopt the budget. Tonight is also an opportunity to adopt the budget. As always, it is the city council's budget ultimately. The council can change the city manager's proposed budget in any way the council sees fit, as long as the result is balanced and it is adopted by at least a majority vote of the council per our city's municipal code. And also, as always, the city manager does not have a vote on the budget. Last year at about this time, the current fiscal year budget was adopted by all five council members sitting on this dais unanimously, more than meeting the city's majority vote requirement. The budget must be adopted by the council by June 30, or the city manager's proposed budget automatically becomes the city's fiscal year 2425 budget. We are happy to pull up any slides from our past presentations should the city council wish to delve into a particular topic. With that, staff again recommends that the city council pass and adopt resolution number 11210, a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2425 operating and capital budgets for the city of Folsom, the Successor Agency, the Folsom Public Financing Authority, and the Folsom Ranch Public Financing Authority. And I will turn it back over to you, Vice Mayor Aquino.
Thank you for that. Let's start with questions from the council for either the city manager or her staff. Mr. Chalamchela, do you have any questions at this time?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I know I brought this one last time as well, and Kelly was generous enough to come here and share with the city amenities and city revenue generation cost recovery. So we talked about that one, and we are going to table that one down the road. As I was in, you know, looking at more and more on the same lines, in 2023, 24, the projected budget, original and proposed and projected, there is a little over $800,000, we are generating more revenue. But this year, proposed is that much less. So if we can make that adjustment, whatever we are generating last year, this year should be definitely either close to or higher. As we can see on slide number four, the expenditure is increasing. So that's a structural thing. I want to bring it to discussion.
Can you bring up slide, someone bring up slide four?
Are you talking about just the Parks and Rec?
This is, this is mainly the amenities of the parks and rec, yes. All the facilities and including, you know, all the things.
So this, here's slide four. Is this what you're talking about?
No, this one is, I'm so sorry, it is Roman letter 461, the actual budget.
Budget document?
Yeah. Roman letter 461 page number. That's a structural thing. I can see it. We are generating, whatever we are proposing, it's a great job by our team. So the kudos to you, generating more revenue. And when we go to the current year, this should be here. So that's the structural recommendation I would like to make in this budget. That's the main one. Proposed, projected.
Okay, so I have a lot, I want to clarify because I have, this whole page I have circles on as well, if you're talking about the Parks and Rec budget summary. So you're, so you're saying, okay, let me look. The projected numbers are less than the, the projected ending for this upcoming 24 year is 800,000 less than the proposed revenue?
It might be helpful if you tell us what line you're on or give us some actual numbers so we can follow along up here.
It is the revenue generation items, the major ones. Funding source in the center, Vice Mayor.
Uh huh.
Aquino. Program revenue, parks maintenance, that's a tiny one. Program revenue zoo, program revenue aquatic center.
Okay.
Program revenue from a community, cultural services, and community facilities.
Okay.
CC and SI. And the program revenue from sports. So if we can take those big ticketed items, the total revenue is coming a little over $6.5 million projected ones, but the proposed is almost like, I don't have exact numbers, $700,000, $800,000 less this year. It's supposed to be from the current year to the next proposed should be a little bit uptick in my mind because, again, I appreciate whatever our staff is doing. I want to give them the creative mindset, thinking that, yes, there is a room, and I know we were talking about, you know, some funding challenges in her own department, Parks and Rec department. This revenue definitely can help. It's not going, it doesn't have to go anywhere.
Stacy, do you want to shed some light on this?
There we go. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
The majority of the variance that I believe you're talking about is that in the projection for fiscal year 2324, we have ARPA revenue. So when expenditures were put into the budget on the expense side, that's when you're recognizing the revenue. So we had ARPA expenditures in the zoo, we had ARPA expenditures in community facilities, ARPA expenditures in, in many of the other divisions. So that is going to bump up the projection for 2324. We did look at every single line item in this department in cooperation with the Parks and Rec Department, going through and saying, how does it look compared to the last three years? Where are we at? And as I mentioned through the budget process, we did feel that we trued up this year higher than what we had in the past. So you'll see for the budget year, we did have significantly lower budget, and our budget for 23, for 2425 is higher than that. And so those are the two, the two reasons there that you do see that variance.
And just for the record, in case people watching don't know, ARPA is the American Rescue Plan Act, which were COVID-19 relief dollars we got from the federal government just one time. They, they don't repeat each year. So we just made a proposal to the council as to how we could best spend them. So once they're spent, they show up here.
My point is on the revenue, not on the expenditure side. The revenue generation from all these programs, the projected and proposed, I can take one example of that one, right?
I could clarify that. So I understand you're talking about the revenue side. When we expend ARPA funds, the accounting rule is that that's when you recognize the revenue at the same time. So because we had expenditures in this year, the revenue is showing up in this projection at the same time. So these revenue projections for 2324 include ARPA revenue.
True. I know, that's why we were asking, I know, city manager was circulating some emails to all of us from you also, Stacy. When I look at the specifics, not some of that ARPA revenue is going to these programs. I did look at, so what, the point I'm trying to make, I want to give kudos to all our staff who are consciously generating the more revenue by creatively, and there is a room to continue that creativity and efficiencies in this revenue. It's a, and I do, I did look at the past departments also, the past years also, when there was no ARPA also. So, which is good. I mean, again, you are a conservative projection person, which we love it because when we project any revenues, we do here, when the actual comes, they are coming here for various good reasons. So my point is, if we can make the base, the projections of the 2023, 24 budget for 2425, that's the only one. For those, four or five, big ticketed 1.5 million to $2 million, because it's a revenue generation at the end of the day to meet our expenses.
Okay, so you, but I think she just explained, we can't do that because you're not going to have ARPA funds in 2425.
Agreed. As I was saying, I looked at beyond ARPA as well. So even, I have the same, you know, numbering how the projection proposed to projection. So, even, I have the same, you know, numbering how the projection, proposed to projection. It is always updated. It's a process thing I'm trying to introduce as well. So, when we are trying to generate this much $10, you know, our efficiency should go to the $11 on the following year in terms of the revenue generation. I'm just taking that simple example because our expenditures are going to the $12 from $10 for various reasons. So, I just want to put that conceptual thing to how we can take a look at these ones.
Okay, any other questions for city staff?
That's the big one. We can, I have a small one.
Can we continue on that one? Because I have more questions before we move on from that one. Is that okay, YK? Is that okay, YK, as well?
Yes.
Okay. Because this is why I asked for the ARPA funding. I asked for how it was split up, so thank you for that. But I also specifically asked for when, and that was not included in the email that we received. So, unfortunately, I'm going to go into the details because I agree with Councilmember Chalamchala. Is that right?
Yes.
I'm going to try every time. That the actual numbers for 2223 budget, or let's just call it the base level that came in, those are the actual numbers for anyone that doesn't understand is the numbers that actually came in. There's no projection or estimation. It's the actual factual numbers. And then you use that to create a budget. So, for the projected, and a projected number for this current budget, which is we're in 2324 budget, it's as close as you can get without having an actual number with the, with the information that comes in. So, we're a lot closer with a projected number than we are with a budgeted number. So, I think that's why you're using that number. Almost in every department, and I think you're talking about the first five funding sources. So, I apologize that the public can't see this, but it's in the proposed budget. The sports, the community, the community center, the aquatic center, the zoo and park maintenance fund. It is in alignment with, I think what YK was saying probably before COVID. The growth of it is going up. Yet, it looks to me like, for example, the parks revenue, park maintenance, which I'm assuming comes out of specific funds, goes down for some reason from the projected end of 24. We have $166,002. We're predicting that we're only going to have $89,000 in revenue. The zoo, we're projecting that we're going to end the year with $1,620,000, but we're projecting that our revenue for next year is going to be $996,000. The program revenue, aquatics, we're actually predicting we're going to go up a little bit. And I would say that's probably because we implemented a, an increase in rate. So, I think that's great. The program revenue for the community, community and cultural services and community facilities, like the community center, for example, that projected goes from 1.4 million down to 1.1. And then the projected revenue of sports goes from 1.8 million almost to 1.6 and 1/2. So, I think what you're saying is, why are we projecting so much less in revenue for five of these categories when this would make sense if we were in the COVID year? If it was July, June of 2020, we would, of course, project. Now, I understand what you're saying about the ARPA funds, and that is the reason that I asked the question. But I don't, I don't, I mean, I asked a few questions through email, but maybe you can explain where the aquatic center or where the zoo is, where's the ARPA funds for that? Because the one, the money we used for the fence, or I can ask Elaine, the money we used for the fence is not included in this number. So, this is program revenue. So, the community center, what part of that? Because the HVAC is not included in this number. So, where is this ARPA funds or what specific ARPA funds are being projected? Because I think what YK also said the last two weeks ago was based on something I brought up last year during the first budget conversation in February or January, a whole year ago. Conservatively, we should always project our revenues a little less and our expenses a little high. There's nothing wrong with that, but we consistently go over and above. And I noticed the same thing here that we, we're not in COVID year, we're not facing a cliff. Why are our revenues so low? So, maybe the answer that I'm looking for is what ARPA things are in the projected numbers for 2324 that's going to end.
I don't have that list right in front of me. I can give a little more information on the projections here that, or just a concern that I would have. If you're looking just at the revenue projections, the expenditures are also, have been going over. So, if we're looking and saying, well, revenue has consistently gone over in one program, that program has probably been going over on the expenditure side. So, there's just a caution that if there were some, an interest to be less conservative on the revenue side, you would need to be adding.
And you did that. You're 200, 150 over in the first park, or 1.2 million over in the park maintenance fund. You're, well, the zoo, the expenses included the gate or the fence. So, you're about $100,000 over on what you budgeted. You're about equal with facility services. Aquatic center is, you went down as well because that include the ARPA funds. I can see that. And then you're 800,000 over, 300,000 from the projected over on the community services. So, that seems like an alignment. That seems like an appropriate projection. What I'm seeing is that the revenue, why would the revenue go down so drastically when you're not including these ARPA funds in the revenue? I don't see where it's included, so.
The other thing, and I can't speak to the actual program details in each of these departments. Maybe Parks and Recreation could add a little more information to it. But we do have some programs where the revenue goes up when the expenditures go up because you have something where you're only earning that extra revenue if you have that extra cost. Mady Kelly can give some examples of that. And so, those types of revenues do not get budgeted because the expenditure does not get budgeted. And we've talked about that during the quarterly reports, that they're up because they've brought in the extra revenue, then they have that extra expenditure. So, those are going to go up at the same time. If you just factor in the extra revenue, that, that extra expense is not factored into this budget because that's just not how we do it. We only do the known things. But some of the programs where they only earn that extra revenue and then they have that extra expense, that's not in there. So, you'd have to bring them both up. You'd have to bring the revenue projection up and then bring that expenditure up by that same amount.
And it looks to me like you brought up the expenses. I can see that clearly.
Not for those specific programs. The expenditures are up for the various things that we talked about, the salary and benefits going up by the amounts that have already been approved, contract expenditures that are already going up, not for these specific program expenses that would bring in extra revenue because they're unknown.
So, I would like more information on this because I understand what you're saying, but it doesn't make sense.
Do you want me to invite the Parks and Rec Director down? Do you have a specific question for her?
Well, okay, I'm just going to go back to what YK was saying.
Sounds like you think we're being too conservative with the revenue projection.
Well, and if you look at, thank you, yes, I mean, 100%. If you look at 2019 and 2020, and 2018, 2019, we're not even hitting some of those revenue goals, and there's no reason we shouldn't be. So, I understand what you're saying. I don't see that playing out in the numbers. I see the expenses going up. I see where the ARPA funds are, but I'm not seeing any ARPA funds. You said earlier that it was ARPA funds that are in the projected, but I'm not seeing any ARPA funds in the projected. And then we're saying now it's because of some program fees. So, if there is more fees in here that we're not aware of and I cannot see with these numbers, then I would like to have that information when evaluating a budget on how we're getting to where our revenue is projected. Because these numbers do not seem in alignment with, take out the COVID years, the previous years and the projected ending and the actual for 2223. They just not, aren't in alignment.
Vice Mayor Aquino, I think you got that point. We are a little bit conservative, and my request is, it's very consistent, proposed, projected by the end of the year. So, my request is, you know, keep that, you know, thought process and policy when we are bringing a new fiscal year budget, go step up. Because in a creative way, to set the goals for the departments who are managing those, let them be creative. And it's not that we are going to penalize them if they can't reach out to their goals, but at least going through that goals approach is a good approach.
But so, I had this conversation with Stacy, and maybe Stacy, you can elaborate on this. Why we don't use last year's projected, because we don't, we don't know the actuals yet for 2324, right? But why we don't use last year's projected as the starting point for 2425? Maybe you can explain that.
Sure, for every category?
Yeah, just generally.
Yeah, generally, so there's a few categories. If we were to look at licenses and permits, the revenue there primarily comes in from community development. We've talked about this before. If they're going to have additional revenue, they have an additional expenditure. So, we can't just take their revenue at the end of the year and go with that because we don't know what is going to happen throughout the year in there. And so, we always leave it to where the revenue is going to be at a base amount. This is specifically for community development licenses and permits. It's going to be at our base amount, and the expenditure is going to be at the base amount. And then the city council has generally been in favor of if permit activity goes up, then the contracted expenses to pay for that, that permit activity will go up as well. And so, that's why we don't go up and down and up and down based on the activity down there. Charges for services is exactly the same thing, primarily in community development. You're going to have ups and downs depending on when the activity is taking place. So, we're not going to bring you a budget that has a big peak and then have to cut it back down. So, we have a base amount that we start with, and that's not going to be what happened at the end of last year. You're going to go back down to the base. So, that allows for flexibility during the year for revenues to come in a little higher. And then now you have flexibility in the budget to actually pay for those activities that that revenue was supposed to pay for. If you bring that revenue budget up to where it was last year, you're either bringing the expenditure up, which would be fine, or if you were to use it for something else, now you don't have the extra revenue to pay for the services that that's supposed to be paying for, and now you have a shortfall because of the budgeting mechanism. So, we just need to be careful when we're looking just at the revenue side, you know, that we're not forgetting that when the revenue is above budget, it's usually because there is an additional expenditure now that was above budget.
And, I mean, we, you know, we can have philosophical discussions as a council about, you know, whether we should be more or less conservative, but I would just caution you. One of the reasons the state of California is looking at a $60 billion-plus deficit is because they have been too optimistic with their revenue projections.
Vice Mayor, I made my point. Yes, the examples city finance director giving is, they fail. My point is, if we are running the facilities, we are running the activities, we are managing the events, it's a creativity brings, I know, hopefully, I'm not quoting him, there is a room for creatively, effectively use our sources to bring the revenue up. We've got to get into that philosophy of if the last year's, this is almost the three, three quarters of the year. If it is coming that high, almost close to 800 to $1 million, this year's supposed to be, I'd rather go for plus 5%. It's fair to do at least the goals. I'm not saying, you know, expenditure won't go because expenditure is, no matter what, it is going up. That's the cola and all those. We can't control that one because we agreed on the contracts and everything. Conceptually, if we can put this, I guarantee you that the human psychology thinks, you know what, let's do something to bring, to meet that goal. So, that's what I'm trying to do here. Conceptually, we have to change the thinking, rather than whatever comes as a revenue, that's the city revenue. Change that to put the goals, try to reach, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rorabaugh, did you have more questions?
I don't have questions. I mean, I, you know, you could take the projected, which I appreciate you asking that question. But if you take the actuals for the 2223 number, we're not in alignment on that revenue either. So, you know, what I appreciate is the aquatic center is being, I think I calculated earlier, is like almost 4% increase in revenue. And that's great because we raised their fee, we can look at sustainability. And I think what I'm looking for is, we have actual numbers for these program fees. I'm not talking about taxes and all of that. I'm talking about the program things, things that we have control over. And, you know, I think that this council should be directing like, okay, well, this is the numbers that came, the actual numbers that came in for the 2223 budget, and they look strong, especially compared to COVID. But even from 2018, 19 year and even before that, 17, 18 year, they look strong and solid, but now we're projecting a lower amount. So, where's the encouragement to look at all of these programs? All of them, community facilities, zoo, park maintenance, sports. And what are we doing as a council to have vision and leadership in where we want these to be? Because, you know, we don't seem to have a standardized target, and we need to get there in order to protect these services. I mean, it's not just about, and I don't think YK or I am being unrealistic in saying, well, I appreciate you said 5% growth. Is that what you mean by 5%? Like adding a 5% encouraged growth, like, and then having Parks and Rec figure out how they implement that? Like they did with the Aquatic Center?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I would say based on the actual numbers from 2223, why don't we direct the, this department to say, we want to see 5% growth in these five areas? And so, that means taking it back to Parks and Rec Commission and saying, do we cut costs? Do we cut rev, do we increase rev? What do we want to do? And, and I think that's very realistic. I mean, I think, you know, there are so much conversations going on with the zoo. I want to look at ways to keep the zoo. I want to look at ways that we keep everything that we need in the city and also everything that we want and has built this city. So, to me, this is a realistic thing. So, a lot of these things are never mentioned again as being on the chopping block. So, when I calculated the zoo, for example, it was around 42% of, 40% of cost recovery. And what was said two weeks ago is that we don't have, that we don't have a cost recovery, recovery goal for that. So, this would insinuate, okay, we don't, let's start somewhere. Let's add 5% revenue growth for the zoo. Let's get us to it, whatever that means. It could mean a dollar more. I don't, you know, that's a bigger, that's a, that's another conversation. I think you can go back to Parks and Rec. But if we set a goal in this budget, which we have the ultimate authority over, and say, this is where we want to be on revenue projections. This is a realistic goal based on previous factual numbers. Let's move this needle. I don't think that's unrealistic.
Elaine, I would agree that, that cost recovery is, is an important part of being able to manage these amenities.
Sure.
In the past year, part of the conversation about hiring an economic development consultant was to possibly consider some of the amenities that we have, where we charge, and, you know, is there, what is the cost recovery? I just remember this conversation happening last year. Is this a part of the plan for the economic development consultant to look at when we look at opportunities that the city has to be able to grow revenue? And maybe if it is, maybe that's where we lay it because this team of people are much more, you know, experienced and knowledgeable about how do we grow revenue with amenities like the zoo and the aquatic center and, you know, other amenities that have rental cost?
Yeah, so, part of the economic development consultant's job is to, you know, give us ideas of how to maximize our amenities, how to maybe think differently about the kinds of businesses that we bring and, and events that we bring into the city. And so, that's all fair game as part of the report that they'll produce. You know, staff isn't here to, you know, this is the council's budget. We proposed a budget. I proposed a budget that's based on, in my professional experience, what I believe is the most rational budget. If the council has a different opinion, you know, that conversation is not with us as staff. If you, if you want to take a greater degree of risk, then that's the council's call ultimately. I would just caution, or maybe ask the question, what happens if that revenue doesn't materialize for some reason? What, you know, if you build that into the budget, I think it's, I think it makes sense to maybe build it in as, you know, to talk about a goal for staff and to, you know, say to staff, we'd really like to see this revenue come up, but to literally build it into the budget and be accountable to that number, somehow you got to pay that bill if it doesn't come in. So, I just throw that out there. But that, this is really a policy call that I think, you know, that you're talking about here. We proposed a budget that makes sense to us with our, you know, 20, 30 years of experience. And if you all are interested in rolling the dice a bit more, then, then that's the council's decision.
I, I want to kind of get through the questions and go to the public, and then maybe we can deliberate about this a little bit more. But. But I think we're conflating two issues here. I think having a discussion in the future about increasing cost recovery levels for certain facilities or, you know, programming or whatever, I think that is a perfectly legitimate discussion. But this is not aspirational. This is what it is, right? If I'm making my household budget and I get, you know, paid a commission or whatever for my salary, yes, I may have a goal of what I want my, you know, my salary to be for that year, but I'm not basing my budget off that goal. I'm basing it off what it is, right? So I, yeah.
I mean, to that point, I appreciate that. But to that point, what it is, is 2223 actual numbers are higher than what we're proposing. It'll be in 2425. So are the projected numbers. I don't know if you can, you know, use the same reasoning that ARPA was in both of them and the program expenses. I mean, I clearly looked, or I didn't clearly, but I looked at the expenses as well, and they are tracking high. So those things have been accounted for. So, you know, I mean, to that point, one point, the sports program, $1.7 million brought in in revenue in 2223, and we're proposing it's going to be at 1.6. Why would that go down? Inflation's high, people, I mean, you know, there's not a logical reason that you wouldn't at least do it from the actual numbers or add an incentive growth. So the same with the zoo. Why is the number going down? We're not walking off a cliff. So I think, I mean, to your point, you would base it on what you've actually brought in the last few years, and then you will look at creating a budget.
Okay, let's not get too bogged down on this right now. But do you have other questions for staff?
We can go to public comment. Or I don't know.
Councilmember Roarbaugh, you guys, you have any questions? Okay.
I interrupted YK on his questions, though.
Oh, no, it's good. We'll talk again, you know. We just, you know, acknowledge the rodeo friends, rodeo grounds, three days is being heavily used with 25,000 people. What's the rest of the year that grounds are doing? I'm just giving a small examples, putting out there. Be creative. That's all I'm trying to do, Vice Mayor, here. And when you put some set goals, this is the opportunity for city council. After that, this is city manager's execution. How we can be creative with all the economic development resources we have, all those great volunteers we have here, and the creative minds in TED cart and chamber. If you put a goal, it's going to be a little bit heat. Then get and see how we can get there. So, and we haven't done that.
I think that's fine to do with the cost recovery, but I don't agree that that's for the budget.
We haven't done this.
Okay, let's move to public comment, please.
Okay, our first speaker this evening is going to be Sharon Kendall, and Cher will be followed by Jason Jared.
Sharon, are you here?
Okay. Our first speaker will be Jason Jared, who will be followed by Bruce Klein.
Good evening. How you doing? So my name's Jason Jared. I am the president of the Folsom Soccer Club. You guys might know it as the Folsom Lake Surf. A little bit about me, 27 years as a public servant in law enforcement. I also owned a business here in the city for about 10 years. So where we're at now is, what I am here basically to speak about is obviously our parks people. I want to make it absolutely clear that our parks people have been working with our staff, and they are amazing. They're doing absolutely everything that they can to facilitate our needs. Just a couple of quick reminders for the council. We directly pay about $400,000 a year to the city. $350,000 in use fees and another $50,000 in basically per kid fee management. So what we do is we provide an essential service to the city for about 3,000 kids right now. I've got 753 playing year round. And right now, I've got 2,000, or I'm sorry, 2,307 sign up for our four-month rec program. Gets kids off their phones, gets them in the park, gets their parents a break, puts them in front of professional coaches for our comp program, great volunteer parents for our rec program. Okay, we cannot continue to do this on the grass fields, plain and simple. Okay? For an example, what we also do for the city in addition to the $400,000 that we bring in every year, we also have tournaments. These tournaments, we tried in October of last year. We had a tournament of 120 teams. Each team has about 15 to 20 kids. That means hotel rooms, that means food, that means shopping anywhere from all of our local businesses. These are generally three- to four-day tournaments, so it's not a one-and-done. We try and do this three to four times a year. After that 120 trying to use the grass fields, we dropped it down to 70. The feedback that we got from that tournament was just that it was an unacceptable thing. These people no longer travel, sometimes out of state, coming from as far away as Colorado, to come and visit our city and then see the fields and the conditions they're in. Again, nothing to do with people at Parks and Rec. It is a basically fiscal issue. So what we're here asking for tonight is basically, please help us do what we can do to bring this back into Folsom. We've also recently, we're trying to build a soccer community in Folsom to bring more revenue into the city. We just sponsored the men's adult team. We were trying to start an adult female team and grow that over time that will continue to bring more revenue into the city. If there's any questions that anybody has at a later date. One last point. I know that this is not a particular discussion about the grass fields, but the turf fields. Everybody knows that those need to be redone. We're already talking to parks about how we, as an organization, will use our money to defer costs later to help the city redo those turf fields so we can have a long-term solution instead of putting it all on the city and basically defer costs as long as we can. We're here for the city, but we need some help because we do have offers on the table from both private industry and other areas around here that they want us to spend our money over there. But we're trying to keep it in the city of Folsom, and we're just asking you guys, please help us do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next speaker will be Bruce Klein, and Bruce will be followed by Mike Saletti.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Bruce Klein, 34-year resident of the city of Folsom. I'm the chair or co-chair of the Yes on G campaign. Great comments by Jason, couldn't echo them more. I want to go back just a little bit from the last council meeting, a couple highlights as I listen back again to that meeting and the prior meeting. And remind folks that of our $110 million general fund budget, there is essentially $1.7 million to work with. $1.7 million. There are $37 million worth of needs, essential services that departments put forward. $37 million. $1.7 million is all that can be spent. Those were not fluffy bunnies, rainbows. Those were essential services. And the manager had a number of comments, which I thought really bode well, or not well. A very constrained budget, shockingly low reserves. We're not fixing, we're not replacing, we have no reserve funds to fix. The cost to run our city far exceeds the revenue. We have millions of unfunded needs in our city. I went back to the proposed level of service requests for all departments and went through them. A couple stood out. Parks asked $880,000 for park renovation. This budget proposes zero. Trail maintenance, $2.5 million of lifts exist right now. They requested $860,000, zero in this budget. Landscape maintenance, we know that issue, and I appreciate what the council did on that. Pulling, we're proposing to pull $300,000 out of a castle park and put it to parks. Absolutely essential. I encourage you to go back, make sure you do that for the reasons Jason just described. When I talk to the surf people as well, those fields are dangerous. They cannot play any tournaments on grass in our community. All those caused us to lose revenue. When they had the discussion last time about $15,000 to $20,000 in city council travel, absolutely essential. It's important for council members to go out and do that. But what that really shows is the gravity that we're talking about in this situation. If we're talking about $15,000 or $20,000 for council travel, boy, we're in trouble. We need to do something about that, and we need to do it now. I went through all the PLs, police, fire, library, public works, all of them, the same situation. So I would ask that you go back and continue to make sure you put that $300,000 into park maintenance. If there was more, it needs to go there. I'm not advocating changing anything about the budget, but please make sure you do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Okay, our next speaker will be Mike Saletti, and Mike will be followed by Jackie Saletti.
Hello, everybody. Nice to see all of you all. So in the spirit of this budget, I want to talk a little bit, and by the way, I am so happy to see you guys talking about, let's find ways to generate revenue, right? The dire predictions about sales tax revenue, and then, you know, everything comes across from there is what do we do, right? Well, there's so much more that I agree that we can be doing, you know, and so many things that we are not doing that if you really want sales tax growth, then people have to shop. And just as a quick example, again, the homeless problem, because that's my thing clearly. I was at Rayleigh's the other day. There's a lady in front, she's heating her spoon with a lighter. She looks like she's rolled in a pigpen. I go inside, get the store manager, store personnel, and say, you realize there's a lady shooting up in front of your store right now? And they say, what do you want us to do about it? And I was like, call the police. And then she walked in, and I'm overwhelmed by the smell, and I left. I didn't shop, I left. So if this is what's going on, no wonder our sales tax revenue is declining, right? So I love proactive, right? How about we put A-frames up for businesses that say, please don't give money to the homeless. You're not being compassionate. You're hastening their death by fueling their alcohol and addiction problems. How about shop local campaigns around town? Let's put up billboards, you have to shop local, you know, support Folsom. I know about, my wife is going to talk about some of the stuff, so I don't want to steal her thunder, but there's ways that we can increase our fee costs. And that's why I love this conversation, right? The private part, I'd love that you're talking about. I love that you're talking about this, right? If we can do a tax against VRBOs to have them pay more money for using our services in our city, how about a tax against apartments? Because if you're adding four times the residents per square foot that you would be from housing, you're quadrupling your costs for services also, right? So what about a use tax for apartments that's passed along to rent? The renter will never know. The landlord will pass it along. You have to compensate somehow for the services that we're providing if the revenue is not coming in. And the old model of, you know, let's predict property tax and sales tax. We don't know how much people are going to shop. It was said in the presentation, we don't know how much building is going to go on. So we better start finding new ways to increase revenue. And I was going to talk about Ben Veneto Park. Did that get canceled? Did that? It did not. So very, very quickly, if I understand correctly, we had eight million in impact fees that were collected. It was going to cost 6.2 million to build. Then the request came last week, another 1.65 million more that was supposed to be for six parks. Now you're at 7.97 billion out of, or sorry, million out of an eight million impound or impact fee account. You've wiped it out. How are we not collecting enough impact fees to pay for the actual cost of actually building the park? I don't understand the mechanisms of government, but it sure as hell seems insane to me that if we want to build parks that we then can't mow and goo weeds on, we should at least be collecting the correct amount of revenue to actually build the parks.
Thank you, Ike.
Okay, our next speaker will be Jackie Saletti, and Jackie will be followed by Dean Williams.
I love what you guys have all said so far. I'm very impressed you guys are having conversations about figuring out other ways for the budget. So with that said, first and foremost, I've talked and spoke about the homeless. It is by far getting worse. It is actually extremely dangerous. It has affected people coming to or even local shopping here. I understand three police are actually getting funded, and three will come from the savings the police have already done on their own. We need a minimum of four. Four funded and seven positions. Like Sarah said, we need all beats covered, south of 50 included. This will have to increase as our population increases. Second, I have talked and heard others with great ideas on how to create revenue with the facilities that we have. Let's start with the zoo. The zoo gets $7 a ticket. What zoo do you visit that gets $7? Here are some ideas. Pay to park, have flex passes, have a local restaurant and shops advertise on the back of the ticket to bring tickets into their establishment and get $2 off of their meals or shopping experience. Have a restaurant on site that serves food and beverage. Do not let people bring in outside food and beverage. Let's talk about the Aquatic Center. Have your passes, charge for parking. It's everywhere you go now that you have to pay to park. As a Folsom local, show your driver's license for a discount parking cost and discount ticket entry. If it's truly outsiders visiting the city that's creating more revenue, then that will increase and not affect our local citizens. Host more pay-per-use events. The rodeo arena, have more events. We used to have concerts, they were amazing. Have a parking cost $5. Ticket and tax charge $50 to $150. To give you an idea, we went to the Placer County Fair on Sunday. We spent $10 to park, $20 per ticket, $80 for a rib cook-off, $30 in beverages. We spent over $150 in another county for one day, one day. People that visit Folsom and use our bike trails, sell a year bike pass that you have to display. Again, on the receipt, have a discount for local shopping to counteract the fee. That way, we know they're spending in Folsom. I'm not saying someday we will not have to pass a tax increase. However, we are nowhere near needing it yet. The budget came in with a $6.8 million increase in revenue that was not projected. That is huge. Raising taxes cannot be the only solution. Like Sarah said, if you have a budget to build a pool for 200,000, if the bid comes in at 400,000, are you going to continue on or go back and readjust? This is like the Ben Veneto Park. There needs to be adjustments made for what was approved. We must exhaust all other options first because as we know, taxes and costs never go down, but revenue can go up. When you pass this budget and push, this was supposed to be for Mike, push at council meetings to raise taxes.
Jackie, I need you to wrap it up, please.
I hope you, I hope you put some serious time and effort into implementing some of these ideas. Thank you, guys.
Our next speaker will be Dean Williams, who will be followed by Robert Goss.
Welcome.
Good evening, council. How are you? I'm Dean Williams. I've been here, living here for about 32 years. Been involved with U-Sports for about 30 of them. Been involved in baseball, soccer, ran tournaments. When I used to run the tournaments, that was probably the best thing I could do. People love Folsom. They could not rave about how well we were. I mean, by far, anybody in Northern California. Unfortunately, that's not the way it is now. And it's kind of becoming an embarrassment. And what I don't like is the fact that we're letting our, it's not just our community, the actual ground that we have here letting it just deteriorate. And it's affecting everything else that's good for our community. Surf soccer spoke about the tournaments. We talk about other ways to bring in revenue, and I think we should do multi-pronged, everything we can think of. I don't think we should necessarily be billing everybody for every step they do in Folsom, but I do believe that we should look at every way. But U-Sports is here. It's in your face, it's right now. That if you take care of the fields and you build it, they come. And soccer brings in a boatload of money when they do their tournaments. And they want to get bigger and do more, bigger regional. And if we have the fields, we can do that. Softball could do the same thing, volleyball, baseball. Volleyball, baseball. I just, it hurts me to see what's happened to our community and what's happening to it. I know budget's an issue, and I know we've got to figure ways around it. But if we don't keep up with at least the minimums of trying to keep these fields in decent shape, the cost is just going to get worse. The fields are going to get worse, and we're going to lose surf. We're going to lose tournaments because we're not going to have anything worthwhile to be here. And I haven't lived here 32 years to watch this thing go into the ground. I do, I've been involved with the tax measure that G that we're doing, and people go, well, why do we need that we don't need? It's not just about raising money to pay for this, that. It's about the investment in our community. It's about building the long-term finances so that we can have matching funds for on-ramps and off-ramps and to figure out what we're going to do with some of the traffic that we've got issues, the waterways, the roads, along with everything. I'm the last person that would ever have come up here saying to raise taxes. But I also have learned a lot, whether I wanted to or not, about our budget. And we need to do a multi-pronged, the tax measure is an investment. It's not just a tax. It's an investment. In addition to that, let's figure ways to bring more businesses in. The investment of our community will do that. That will help bring people, and we get rid of the homeless issue. That will get people to stay and shop and come in. And ooh, I'm going to make it on time. So I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dean.
Okay, your last request to speak is from Robert Goss.
Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, City Manager. Two weeks ago, we were really close to adopting a budget, I felt, and we had an adjustment in the Castle Park capital budget because that is essentially general fund. Money's coming from the unassigned fund balance, and we were transferring to the maintenance contract so that we can keep the maintenance as best as we can. It's not ideal, but it's certainly better than a reduction. I didn't see that tonight because I know that there wasn't a final decision. I just encourage you to bring that idea back so that we can hold the fort on the park maintenance. As you all know, I had a nice, long career here in Parks and Recreation. I want to talk a little bit about these budget variables. In Parks and Recreation, all kinds of things can affect your budget and the programs. And my recollection is that there were more than 1,100 separate recreation program things you could sign up for in the city over the course of a year. Weather affects those. Whether it's wet weather or hot weather affects those things. Changing recreation trends. We've seen recreation activities crash from one year to the next just because it isn't popular anymore and people have moved on doing something else. So budgeting a little bit low in revenue and where you really think you're going to be on expenses is right, is the way to go. And let them exceed your expectations. Budgeting high and coming in low is always an awkward discussion at the end of the year. Rodeo program. YK, the rodeo arena, besides the rodeo, has hosted innumerable bike races, the Renaissance Fair, obstacle course runs for several years, concerts, all kinds of things. It has very limited utility really overall. That doesn't mean that there can't be more. I'm confident that the staff tries and engineers whatever they can to make that happen. What I would suggest to you is there's, let me put a different hat on real quick, that the River District process is going to bring some new ideas for that to you at some meetings in the near future. So you'll see some new ideas, some new thinking on that. And that will always go, also go through the Parks and Recreation Department, or excuse me, Commission, Historic District Commission, Planning Commission, et cetera. But you'll see some new ideas there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. All right. I would like to do this next part as efficiently as we possibly can and hopefully come up with a budget that everybody can support. So let, this is what I'm going to suggest. Obviously, the City Manager has proposed her budget. I'd like to talk now about what changes you want to make to what she has proposed. We won't do an official vote on those, but we can poll each council member to see if there's support for those changes. And then when it comes time to make a motion for the entire budget, we can incorporate the changes that have a supportive of the majority of the council. Does that work? Okay. So if we start where we left off last meeting, Councilmember Roarbaugh, you had made a request at the last meeting to increase the council's travel budget. So right now, our total travel budget is $15,000.
Seventeen.
Well, seventeen is the travel and meeting. We use about $2,000 for meetings. So if we use the $15,000, what do you want to increase it to?
As I said last time, you know, there's several ways we could do this. We could kind of poll where we want to go next year and develop it that way. But there's also an idea that we increase it by like, you know, let's double it to $30,000 with the $2,000, so it'd be 32, at least to get us started and moving in the right direction. And then we can negotiate as a council, you know, throughout the year, who gets to go to what. And then at that point, we can always pull from the increased revenue we'll have throughout the year if there's more people that want to go. I also think that continually, that council travel should be carried over. So, I mean, I honestly would like to see it at $35,000, meaning add 18. So, you know, I'm hoping with two new council members coming in this next year that they'll want to invest in like ICSC, National League of Cities, go to cap to cap, and educate themselves and leadership opportunities. So I would feel much better at $35,000. And then we carry that over. So if we don't use it every year, it continues to either build or we can adjust the budget going forward. But to me, that seems very reasonable. It was mentioned earlier that it's pretty silly that we're, you know, trying to find $18,000 when our revenue went up by 6.8 million dollars last year. So I guess I could stop advocating for it and tell you $35,000.
Okay, so you want to go from a total of $17,000 to $35,000 for the travel and meeting budget. Where do you want to take that additional $18,000 from?
I think there's a lot of places we could take it from. We could take it from the contingency fund this year, which we have 600, almost $50,000 still in. And yes, that adjusts this budget, but that's easy to do. I think we could start there. That's the simplest. I think there's other things that we could talk about ongoing, but I think that would be the simplest.
Okay. Stacy, any issues with taking it from the contingency fund?
You couldn't take it from this current year's contingency budget. You could reduce the contingency line item next year down from the full 1%.
Okay.
Which is basically taking it from the unassigned fund balance, either way.
Is that what you're proposing?
Sure.
Okay, so Councilmember Roarbaugh would like to increase the council's meeting and travel budget from $17,000 to $35,000, taking $18,000 from the contingency line item for next year. Councilmember Rodriguez, do you support that change?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Chalamchurla?
Yes.
Okay. And I, for the record, do not support increasing the council's meeting and travel budget, but obviously there is support for that. Okay, let's move on to kids' play park. City Manager proposed to take 1.1 million from our unassigned fund balance to renovate and replace kids' play park. We talked a little bit last time about maybe reducing that to $800,000 because of the fundraising effort that we know is brewing in the community and taking the remaining $300,000 and putting it toward park maintenance to try to keep us as close as we can to the levels we're at now. Is that still what we want to do?
Yes. The 100, yes. I want to talk about the $300,000 in maintenance separately.
Okay. This is the time to talk about it.
Well, it goes into an alignment with what YK brought up earlier about our revenue goals for Parks and Rec. So it's more complicated than that.
Okay. So, okay, so we'll start with this one. So instead of taking 1.1 million from the unassigned fund balance, you just want to take $800,000. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Take it $800,000 from where? From?
Instead of devoting 1.1 million of the unassigned fund balance to renovating Castle Park, using $800,000.
Oh, yeah. That's fine.
Councilmember Rodriguez? Or sorry, Chalamchurla? Okay, and I'm fine with that, too. Okay. Let's go to, we'll just do the three that we talked about last time, and then we can move on. Benevento Park. The capital improvement budget for this year, you talked about $1,650,000 going toward Benevento Park. My understanding is that that did go back to the Parks and Rec Planning Subcommittee. Two out of the three members were able to attend, and they are in favor, I got a report from both of them. They are in favor of continuing with the staff recommendation to devote that money to Benevento Park, which was, as mentioned earlier, is developer impact fees. Any issues with that?
I still have a little bit of an issue with it. I think that I would like to see a whole conversation go to Parks and Rec about something that you brought up, Councilmember, you know, last meeting about, are we okay with just funding one big park at Empire Ranch and foregoing the other three that were promised? Or do we want to hold the design, reduce the design, keep it at 6.3 million before we go out to RFP? We haven't gone out to an RFP yet. So take the original design and edit it a little bit to stay within the $6.3 million already allocated for this park. And, I mean, I don't think a lot of time has to go by. And then, and then you will have some other monies in that fund, that impact fee. Again, it's an impact fee for those paying attention. It can't be used for other park maintenance or kids' play park or anything like that. It has to be used for a new park in certain areas. Use that 1.65, 1.65 million to start looking at building those other pocket parks or whatever those other three parks were envisioned in Empire Ranch. And I would like that to be a discussion at Parks and Rec. What is, is, are they saying yes, one big park? Or are they saying, yes, okay, let's go out and redesign this or reduce the design and let's build other parks with the money?
So my understanding is the Planning Commission said one big park. Brad, do you want to come maybe down and speak to this, please?
Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager, Brad Nelson, Park Planning Manager. Let me switch presentations here real quick. So the, I just wanted to go over sort of a quick timeline of, I think this might inform your decision a little bit, where we've been and how we sort of got to where we're at. So back in 2020, City Council approved, originally approved $3 million in impact fees to be used for the design, engineering, construction of Benevento. At that time, at that meeting, staff was directed to discuss completing Benevento with the Parks and Rec Commission to determine whether or not that was the best use of the funds or if we should look at the other parks in Empire Ranch. So there's a total of six parks that were planned in Empire Ranch today, only, to date, only two have been built, Hazel McFarland and Nisanon. Benevento would be the third. In June 2020, Parks and Rec Commission formed the Benevento Ad Hoc Subcommittee. In August 2020, the design contract was approved at Wilson Design Studio for, both for the planning and design of Benevento as well as Prospector Park. And then in May 2021, the Ad Hoc Subcommittee met to review preliminary cost concepts and an updated rough order of magnitude costs. So I wanted to keep in mind, too, this is really stretched out. This was all during COVID. The Park and Rec Commission wasn't meeting regularly. It was truly a challenging period. So the Benevento Ad Hoc Subcommittee again met in July of 2021 to determine if they should move, if we should move forward with Benevento. And we also reviewed the needs assessment. So the Parks and Rec Department had a needs assessment updated in 2020. And the outcome of the needs assessment was that we should, and what the community felt like we should do, was build more active parks. So in September of 2021, the Parks and Rec Commission forwarded a recommendation to the City Council to continue with the design engineered and phased construction of Benevento Family Park. So that's the phased park. So we're, still today, we're talking about a phased park, not the entire park construction. That also means we need to design the park, at least to the master plan level and some, to some level for the entire park build-out. So we'll be looking at future stormwater, future sewer, future electrical, all that stuff is considered in the initial design, even though we're going to build just a portion of it. So in October 2021, the City Council approved the Park and Rec Commission's recommendation with respect to design and construction of Benevento. And in May the following year, the City Council approved an additional $2.4 million toward Benevento Family Park. The Planning Development Subcommittee met to review the master plan in Phase 1 in August. That was after a series of community meetings we had in the summer. And the Parks and Rec Commission forwarded a recommendation to the City Council to approve the master plan and Phase 1 of the park. So last year, City Council approved an additional $900,000. And just this past week, the, as Vice Mayor said, the Planning Development Subcommittee met to discuss additional funding, and they approved our staff's recommendation for the additional funding in the upcoming fiscal year. So a little bit about our goal for what Phase 1 of Benevento would be. So this is more or less a rough priority. So the volleyball complex is important. It's critical to the success of that park. There's also a plaza area for the volleyball complex, which includes a restroom and storage building for the sand groomer, obviously restroom facilities, and then paving and some picnic tables. There's the lower parking lot adjacent to the volleyball complex that's on Broadstone Parkway. There's, the park, as I mentioned two weeks ago, is extremely challenging in terms of grading, and we didn't have a grasp of that truly at the initial conceptual phase. So it's really increased the cost because we need to be able to access all three of the elevations in the park, not only with stairs, but also with ADA ramps. I think it's critical if we have a volleyball complex, we need some sort of a play area. It just kind of balances out the use, and it's very important. There's also a secondary upper parking lot off of Carpenter Hill Road. So Broadstone Parkway, you turn to the right, Carpenter Hill Road. That's a 37-stall parking lot that'll reduce some of the parking impacts in the neighborhood up there. And then we're hoping also to get a maintenance vehicle access path to that middle area here. So those are roughly the priorities. The final determination of what will be included in Phase 1 is going to depend on the available funding, and then it'll depend on the costing. So this is the plan as it exists. I can go into detail if you'd like, or I think this is probably a little bit more interesting. So this summarizes the funding and the phasing. City Council approved 3 millions in 2021, 2.4 additional in 2223, 2324, there was an additional $923,000. So the total allocation to date for Phase 1 is currently 6.3 million. The additional request is for 1.65 in the upcoming fiscal year, and the, which would leave us with a budget for Phase 1 at 7.9 million. So on the right, I thought this is also very telling. So this is Department of General Services California Construction Cost Index. So these are the construction costs from San Francisco Bay Area through the Central Valley and how they've increased over, since 2019. I didn't go back very far. So 2019, the costs increased 3.6%. 2020, they were 2.8%. 2021, 13.4%. 2022, 9.3%. And 2023, 9.4%. We don't know what the cost increase is going to be, but it's been extremely high. So our feeling is that with the remaining 1.6, there's, you can't build another park for 1.6 million, unfortunately. 15 years ago, even 10 years ago, you could. You can't today. It's very, very, very challenging. So where we're at currently, the SEQA process is currently underway. The design development is complete, basically. And as I mentioned, what's included in Phase 1 will be determined based on the available funding. What you're seeing here is a complete draft plan. Only the Planning Development Subcommittee has seen it. So this identifies where we were, how we've progressed in terms of the design from that master plan. So that's an effort also to get a little more accurate costing. So where, what our next steps are, regardless of the outcome of the budget discussion, the approval of the updated master plan in Phase 1 will be taken back to the Park and Rec Commission. I think it's important that they get a final say, an approval for what's in Phase 1 based on what the available funding is. The approval of the SEQA and that master plan and the Phase 1 will then come to the City Council, and then we go out to, or then we prepare plan specifications, engineering, followed by bidding and construction. So hopefully that provided you with some additional information.
That's very helpful. Thank you. And Brad, is it anticipated that some of the parking during the day would be devoted to Vista de Lago students?
So we've discussed that, we've been discussing that with the school district for a number of years, and it's always been our intention to allow them to use a portion of the lower parking lot. So Vista de Lago High School is over here. This is Broadstone Parkway. This is the big pond that's in the middle of the park site. So this is that parking lot that we were anticipating letting them use. How that works out, we don't really know. We haven't quite figured that out because we haven't got to that point yet. And the amount of parking that they currently need seems to be diminishing according to our, based on our discussions with the school district.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Brad?
Yeah. I think you can go back to the previous slide. Of these dollars, 6.3 millions, I know you have done all the designs, SEQA, and how much has been spent from this dollar?
None of that has been spent. So we have $400,000, a little over $400,000 for the design and engineering. That's what we're currently spending.
Got it.
So that's just for the construction.
Just, thank you so much. So there is another $400 is even spent as part of?
Yes, right.
So far.
So Brad, if this gets approved tonight, how soon do we expect construction to begin? Because when you look at timelines and construction and costs, the law Because when you look at timelines on construction and cost, the longer we wait to get started on this project, the more expensive it's going to get, and then we're going to be having this conversation in a year from now, saying, we need more money to get the park fixed or completed.
You're correct, yes. It's been challenging, I'm the only park planner here at the city, and there's a lot going on, so.
We're about to get you some help, Brad.
Yes.
Fall goes well tonight.
So our goal is to wrap up the construction document. I think doing these additional steps is probably going to add a couple months, but I'd like to be under construction this time next year.
Okay.
Before the, you know, before the budget comes.
I just want to let you know, you are appreciated.
Yeah, yeah. You know, just to echo what our, you know, Rosario was mentioning, good friend, you have a genius brain, you have done so many planning, all those, but when I sit here, I have to see the dollars, taxpayer dollars are the money coming, being wisely spent as well, right? So yes, these are, maybe those are San Francisco, not Folsom, so, just kidding.
It includes, it includes the Central Valley, these costs.
Agreed, agreed. No, but we can, we can always, you know, work with our vendors, you know, in a competitive bid and all those, we'll talk that later, once we have money. My thought is, I just want to put this in front of you, by the time it is going to finish, you know, we got to add another $400,000 to this one, which is for a design and a SEQA and all those, it is 8.5 million dollars. My thought is, I'm going to take an analogy here, we are building schools on the south of 50, we built a Mangini Ranch Elementary School for 60 million dollars. Within two years, we are building Alder Creek Elementary School, 80 million dollars.
Let's clarify that we are not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The school district.
School district, well, residents, right? It's at the end of the day taxpayers' money. Now, we are all putting some strong questions to school board and the management, can we rethink the spending on the school building and all those 360 degrees? I want to bring the same analogy also here. So the money what we have, and how we can, the reason I said you have a genius brain, you know, so it's sometimes expensive, but what can we do in a reasonable way? I really want you to take that back, I'm sure you might have done these discussions with our Parks and Rec team, I do see some commissioners, thank you for being here as well, that's one thing. And the second thing is, as I was noting it down, Empire Ranch was built almost since, I think, 95, right?
It's been close to 20.
So 30 years, and we promised the six parks, so far built two and one more. Not knowing the details, the remaining three are the community parks in the center of the busy, family-going, I rather want to spend that 1.5, 6, we won't get anything. Even with a small place structure with a water fountain, restroom, adding another half a million or a million down the road. I rather want to think that way, I agree what Vice Mayor is talking about, you know, big bill, if we have money, if not, we still have to serve those tiny community parks, 2.5 acres, 3 acres. I read, you know, quite a bit of things since last time, I want to think that way as well. So the remaining three, where they are not knowing how big they are, can we think in this way, maybe even a 2 millions to 2.5 million, a small place structure with a restroom to a water fountain, the neighborhood is a small park parents can take, because we promised 30 years ago, we haven't delivered. Rather putting almost 8.5 millions, by the time it is going to close, 9 millions, you need 10% contingency, I can speak that right now, right? You need another 70 to 80,000 on top of this one.
That would be included, the contingency would be included in that number, so we'd have to back that down, yes.
Okay, so that's my thought process, I just want to put, you know, in front of you, and I'm sure you are seeing it, we may probably, our commissioners may speak or not, that's where my mindset is, right?
Okay.
It seems pretty clear to me that this park has been approved over and over and over again by the Parks and Rec Commission and the City Council. And because we have dragged our feet and taken five years to get to this point, the cost has escalated, it's going to continue to escalate. We cannot spend this money on anything else, we cannot spend it to renovate a current park, we cannot spend it on police, it has to be spent on a park in Empire Ranch. Yes, it's expensive, but it's only going to get more expensive the longer we wait. I am in favor of just moving forward.
I'm in favor of moving forward.
We got a lot of pushback about where are all the parks that were promised north of 50 already, all over the city. We're still, we've still allocated 6.3 million, the last time we allocated was last fall, I think, was the date, 923 million, yes, 923,000. And so the cost escalation from there is going to be less than 9%, it hasn't been a full year. So, you know, I think this is the problem. We have impact fees for a reason, we have a master plan that says Empire Ranch gets six parks, and we have master plans, or specific plans, that say throughout the city that so many parks are supposed to happen, and they haven't happened, and this is because we, the costs continue to escalate for whatever reason, and we don't adjust our design. So to me, it goes kind of to what YK, him and I are both on the two-by-two committee with, with the school, and, you know, they were proposing a $400,000 high school, a really nice high school. But the last one comparatively was, I think, 100,000? 400 million, thank you. 400,000, yes, sign us up.
I'll try.
I could not build my house for that. Thank you, Rosario. And they had to go back to the drawing board, because their tastes were too, you know, too high, and, you know, Rose will just build a school with today's dollars for 230 million. So, you know, I feel like we can adjust this, do we need three tiers? You know, there was a lot on there that aren't getting built already in Phase One, so that means the costs are going to continue to escalate more, past the 9 million. So I'm not comfortable with saying yes, I think, you know, this could go back to Parks and Rec, decide if that is what they are going to suggest to us, that we're only going to build three parks in Empire Ranch, go out to the community, or just decide, I don't, and bring back a recommendation, but I'm not comfortable with the cost escalating it the way it is, with the design it is, and we are still only talking about Phase One, so my answer is no.
We have the Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission here, let's bring him up real quick. No. Or Krista may need it for.
Hello, City Council Brian Wallace, Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission. I did want to speak on Benevento, I know that there's been some discussion about revenue generating and cost recovery, and one of the things that we did talk a little bit about in the presentation, or Brad did, the volleyball court is a tournament-level volleyball facility. And so the idea is that the city would be able to cover maintenance for this park through the rental of this facility. This is nothing like we've ever done in planning, this has been with Parks and Rec for a long time. I do not think that sending it back to Parks and Rec is going to change anything, because this has come back to, this has already been to council, and it's already been approved. It is expensive, and obviously with limited funds, only so much development can happen at any given time. So if you take a look at, you know, what's been, what's been done here at Benevento with one park planner, there's only so much that can be done. We can't start planning another park with no funds, because we'd be running in these escalators again.
So Brian, in your opinion, if we sent this back to the Parks and Rec Commission, do you think anything would change, or do you think the recommendation would still be build Benevento?
I believe the recommendation would be the same.
Okay, thank you. I see Commissioner Hedges back there nodding in agreement.
Again, we're not saying not build it, we're saying just stay within the 6.3 at this moment, come back to us if there's adjustment that need to be made. I'm not saying don't build it, they already have 6.3, I want to just make that clear. Like, I think that they deserve a park over there, I think 6.3 is a really good amount, and we're going to be building kids' play park for, from 800,000 to 1.1 million, so totally different thing, less than an acre probably, or a couple acres compared to 13 or 14, whatever it was. But I still am 100% behind building it, just adjusting the design.
Okay, I'll go ahead and call Lorraine Pajoni up, because she, but then after that, we're done with public comment, but this is specific to Benevento, I hope. Okay.
Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor and City Council Members and City Manager, Lorraine Pajoni, Prior Parks and Rec Director. One thing that I did want to clarify, and it's an exercise our staff did before I retired, is we took a look at every single park that was in the city, and we wanted to be compliant with the California Parks and Rec Society and also NRPA's desire to have parks within a 10-minute walking distance. What we determined, because we were looking at the unfinished and not yet completed parks, and wanted to know, when we presented this to our commission, when we had the conversation about Benevento, that was factored in, is there another little pocket out there in the city of Folsom that we should be concentrating these funds on? What we found is that Benevento was the last park that we needed in order to provide parks within a 10-minute walking distance of every resident in the city of Folsom. The other parks that are unfinished or not yet started would be bonuses if we could build them when funds were allowed, so I just wanted to add that.
Thank you very much. Okay, so the capital improvement budget as proposed by the City Manager includes $1,650,000 for Benevento Park. If you want to make a change, I need somebody to propose a change, and we'll see if there's support for that.
Well, I propose to not fund the 1.6 and just continue at 6.3, or come back in, come back with a, a different, not a different design, I propose not funding the 1.6, that's the simplest way to say that.
Councilmember Rodriguez, what is your feeling?
I think this park has, I think as the Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission had indicated, it's gone back to them. I am comfortable utilizing the 1.6 to be able to create the park that is needed to get it built, I'd like to see it start as soon as possible, because I get angst when we continue to wait and wait and wait, and here we are now in a situation where we need more money to be able to get this park going. I do believe that the amenities that are included in this park will help fund, you know, I think sand volleyball is a really big sport, it will, it'll bring revenue into the city, but I would like to move forward with the recommendation to utilize the 1.6 to be able to create, to, it won't even complete it, it'll just get the park started going.
Councilmember Challenger, yea or nay for the, in keeping the 1.65 million in the capital improvement budget?
Nay, but I just want to add a little bit, it's a Phase One. Phase Two, we need a little over 3 million dollars. So if we are investing 11-ish to 12,000, 12 million dollars in one park, we got to think twice. So my request is, I think Brad, please think on where we can cut some of those extra features to bring the cost down.
Okay, well, we have a tie, I guess that means it will not go forward for this one, okay. Any other changes people want to see from what was proposed by the City Manager? We talked about the three that we talked about last meeting. Councilmember Rodriguez, anything else?
No, I am comfortable with the budget, word stance.
Councilmember Roraba.
YK, are you going to talk about what you talked, what you brought up earlier? Because the, we haven't, you deferred the 300,000 in maintenance for this conversation, so.
Yeah, I think Vice Mayor, as you're also recognizing, but I hear what people are saying, but I'm going to stick to think creative, and if we are generating the projected revenues for this year this much, the next year proposed should be here, and a 5% increase as a target to let our friends think creative and explore, and I just want to add one more also on this, I want to change this one, that's the change I'm asking. So the right now, fiscal year 2024 to 25, proposed revenues for those four major items be replaced with the current year's projected plus 5%. Revenue.
So you want to make a change to the revenue projection, is that what you're saying?
That's right.
Or the program fees for Parks and Rec?
On that.
Not fees, the program revenue.
Exactly, I just want to make one more clarification, my goal is not to just increase, I know Jason is still here or not, we were talking about the soccer, my goal is not to increase the fee and pass it to the people to generate the more revenue, be creative. I'm going to use one more, we have a Hinkle Creek Nature Center, next to it, we have close to 2,500 to 3,000 square feet, nice, first, that side of the fire station. Think how we can use it, I was visiting for something else, I was asking few questions to other people, so revenue generation, so those are the things I want to think, not right on changing the price at the gate, that could be a last resort.
Councilmember Challenger, with the conversations that we've had in the last year in regards to the economic development consultant and the recommendations that they're going to have, I mean, I look at where we are with the budget, if this doesn't pass, we will end up with a budget that will be the recommendation from the City Manager. So the question is, is that something that we can, is that something that we can hold off and have conversations when we do get a presentation from the consultant and the company that was hired for economic development as far as cost recovery?
My only point to that one is, yes, they are driving towards that, how we can bring extra dollar in a creative way, using the current, and that's coming anytime, because they have been working for the last six to eight months, right? So this budget is for next year. I rather want to put the targets and work towards it, is my recommendation, otherwise we are talking 25, 26 budget. So we are already driving in that direction, I'm complementing what you are saying, but at least by putting the targets here as a goals and driving towards it.
Okay, so say it again, you want to make a change to the revenue projection for what item?
All programs up there under revenue, revenue from the parks maintenance, I'm not sure why it is there, we can exclude that one, but the major ticketed items, revenue from the zoo.
Say what they are.
Revenue from the zoo, revenue from the aquatic center, revenue from the sea and CS/CF, which is community, cultural services, and community facilities. And revenue from the sports.
Is there, does, has the City Council done this, where they've directed this finance director to make a change to the revenue?
Not in the 19 years that I've been here, no.
I have a question in terms of, is, if we were to increase the revenue, is that going to drive departments to say, well, we need to figure out a way to increase that revenue, or is it just whatever ends up becomes the actual?
Respectfully, Councilmember Rodriguez.
What I'm looking for is that it does drive them, it motivates them to reach these revenue goals, and that is the vision that we have for the city, is that we want to maintain these services, and just putting towards councils saying, we need to get better at our cost recovery. I think from talking to some Parks and Rec commissioners, a few of them, you know, they're at the, we saw the ranges two weeks ago, we don't need to retalk about those, but they were at the low end of all of those ranges, and then the zoo doesn't have a goal. So I think this is a way of saying, this council has a vision, and we want to keep all these amenities, we don't know what's going to happen in the fall, but, you know, we think, you did it with the aquatic center, which I think is fantastic, so let's do it with the other programs too. We are directing, a vision of our city is that we get a little bit closer on our cost recovery, and I think adding 10% or 5% as a goal is a decent goal.
But as I said before, it seems like we're conflating two issues, why don't we just bring back the cost recovery percentages for a future conversation? I mean, right now, we're basically, we're telling our professional finance staff what our revenue projection should be, they're the experts.
See, I see it different, I see it, we're actually creating a goal and a vision for the city that we can no longer run the zoo, the community center, the sports, or we're, you know, we need to do better in order to do all the things that people have talked about. in order to do all the things that people have talked about, to make sure we can replace our turf, to make sure we can maintain the parks, to make sure we can keep the zoo. Vet bills went up, all these other things. You know, the community center, to make sure that we can replace the chairs and tables when we come. We're looking at, you know, the cost of doing something and then making sure it's economically feasible in the future, the long-term future to continue to do it. Most of the fees in all of these programs were changed, well, I know, I think the last time something was, many of them were changed in 2006, but I think there was a change in 2008, possibly 2012. But, you know, it's the same thing we did with the impact fees with the Community Development Department. It was 2006, the last time we changed any of, a lot of those fees, and now we're going to generate another million dollars next year through the Community Development Impact, you know, different permitting fees. So it's the same thing that I'm requesting here, and I think YK is saying here, let's set the goal. This is what a council can do. We see a vision, we represented a budget, we see a vision, you know, that we can do better than this. That's all. It's not that unusual to say, here's our goal. It's a 5% add-on goal.
City Manager, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I would just say, first of all, I'm hearing a lot about, you know, driving city employees and they'll feel driven. On behalf respectfully of all the city employees, they are driven nearly to the brink right now. So first of all, they're all working as hard as they can to keep this city held together. Beyond that, I have to state that professionally, I am very concerned about building a budget based on aspirations and visions. That is not done, and it's not appropriate, and if you choose to do that, it is against my advice.
Thank you, okay.
I don't think there's any, I'm not building a budget on anything aspirational. I'm creating a vision that I believe that we can do based on the factual numbers that I have right here from 20, from 1920, 2018 to 19, 19, 2019 to 2020, and the projected end of this year. I wouldn't be, you know, agreeing with YK if the numbers weren't in alignment with this. And I have looked at all the expenses and I have looked at almost all the other departments too. All the revenue growths are in alignment with growth, except this one. So that's.
Okay, let's just take a straw poll here and see if there's support for this idea. So Councilmember Chalantchurla, your change that you want to propose is to increase the revenue projections for the zoo, the aquatic center, the community, whatever the analogy thinks initials stand for, and the sports complex by 5% from what we have here?
Our projected numbers from 2023, 24?
Add 5% to those. Okay, so you support that. I do not support that. Councilmember Rorba, do you support that idea?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Rodriguez.
I do not support that, but I would like to see this on the future agenda item as a cost recovery, or whether it come back through the Economic Development Consultant.
I also, I just wanted to repeat something that I've said many times to the City Council that just because you raise fees for different services and programs that we provide, you cannot automatically assume you will have the same number of customers. And that's kind of a flaw in this logic. You can't just think of the zoo and say, it's only seven bucks, you know, raise it to whatever. You know, whatever the number is, you can't, it's not straight math. So it's, it is risky, and the, these aspirational visions won't pay our bills. And I'm worried about that shortfall, and that's what our job is to caution you about that.
Okay, well, there is not a majority of support for that, so that will not go forward. Okay, any other?
Yeah, I just, I need to say this. I appreciate what you just said, Elaine, but I also don't appreciate the tone that I'm trying to advocate for something that's aspirational and out of the realm. I'm an economics major. I understand the tipping point of price and cost recovery things. I'm coming at this very logically, not expressing anything out of the realm of what I'm seeing disconnected here. As a council member, we have a right, and I mean, if I asked anybody on this council and you, or in the audience, like who oversees the, whose budget does this end up being? As you've said many times, it's the council's budget. And who is the overseer of how these things are implemented and how these things are, come up with? We are with the ultimate responsibility of how these things happen. So, you know, I don't want to micromanage anything. I'm just saying, and I think YK is too, but I want to put words in your mouth, is, hey, here's a goal. This is something the community has been crying out for, of, you know, how do we sustain the programs that we do have? So I don't think 5% was too much. I just, you know, I just want to clarify, as you clarified for yourself, that this isn't out of the realm, but I also understand that there's not a majority to do this, so.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just add something to it? I support, I support us looking at our amenities and what we charge and what we look at. I remember when I first got on the City Council, I remember thinking, we should get paid 100% for all the amenities that we have. And then it was like, well, it would cost $20 to get into the zoo. And then it was, well, yeah, that's really expensive for a family of four. And then I started to see things a little different. But I just want to say that I do, I do believe that it is a topic that should come back for discussion.
As part of the cost recovery.
Much sooner than later so that we can have conversations about how we make that happen.
Okay, thank you.
That is a different conversation.
Okay. Any other changes that you want to propose to what budget was presented by the City Manager? What about, from our last conversation, we had talk about trying to put some money, understanding that it would be one-time money toward park maintenance to try to basically maintain the levels that we have right now, knowing that that is a short-term fix. Is there still a desire to do that? It was $300,000.
I support that.
Councilmember Rodriguez? Or sorry, Rorba?
I absolutely support making sure we have $300,000 for maintenance, and actually, we only need 250, according to what I saw in the budget, that 50,000, unless it was for something different, but it said 50, the email that we received back from the city today is 50,000 was already going to be allocated towards maintenance. So if it takes 300,000 to get up to where we were, 50,000 is already funded in the draft budget that our City Manager proposed. I can't find it at the moment. So it's actually only 250. That would bring us up to that 3,000.
Are you okay with just keep doing 300,000?
So we can do a little bit more?
Yeah, and, well, hopefully. And then just because the 800,000 for kids' play park plus the 300,000 for landscaping gets us to the 1.1 million that was originally proposed?
I guess what's going through my head is, I mean, it goes back to what we just, you know, spoke a lot about, is there's going to be more revenue coming in, in these five programs from the past examples in the past several years. So why don't we encourage the Parks and Rec Department that we are saying, yes, add 300,000 to the maintenance department and take it out of the increased revenue that we're incentivizing you to get with these programs?
Why don't we wait to see if the revenue materializes?
Well, and then that could be also, we can, you know, I guess we can vote on it coming out of the unassigned emergency funds, and then hopefully we don't need to use it.
Okay. So we'll do this one more time. Councilmember Rodriguez, would you support $300,000 from the unassigned fund balance to be put toward landscaping costs to try to keep them at the level that we have now, knowing that we're only using $800,000 for kids' play park?
Yes, especially after hearing the gentleman speak.
From the soccer. All right. Councilmember Rorba, are you in favor?
Yes.
Councilmember Chalantchurla?
Yes.
Okay. And me too.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
I just want to make one more comment. No, this is yes. There is nothing for me on that. I just want to echo for Elaine and Kelly, I really want to make sure you pass this message to all your management and leaders. You guys are doing extremely, you know, great job. There is still a room, certain areas, that's where the revenue is going to be generated. Please, think outside the box mindset, be innovative. You came from the outside world. I'm sure you have so many creative ways. Please pass that. Your team is doing awesome job. But council is looking for, think outside the box, collaborate with Chamber, collaborate with your better half, you know, just now talking about some innovative ideas? Bring few more dollars extra. So the first one, 300, yes, one more time.
Okay. Any other changes that anybody wants to propose?
I have one. This is about, I know a couple of residents just spoke about, Margie was here as well, the homeless challenges, it is ever-growing. And going back to how we are funding those four officers, police officers. In this budget, we are only giving for one officer. The remaining three officers are the salary savings from the police department only. Only police department has to save that, to fund those three additional positions. My recommendation, since this is the budget.
YK, I'm just going to clarify for you. We had six positions authorized, but only funding three.
Yeah.
Okay.
Six positions, three are funding. I know, I was going by the presentation here, there is four police officers, there is only one. But anyways, six positions funded and the three are only being, sorry, six positions. What do we say this?
Yes, and three.
Salary savings.
Right? Yes, they're going to get six positions no matter what, but they're going to be squeezed to save the dollar from other places. But every other department, we have to be fair, the same way. No other department is running in that logic. Here is my recommendation. Again, I'm going to give kudos to our Finance Director. You know, she usually makes the, our estimates, sales tax, property tax and other revenues. And I have last 12 years' revenues, projected and actual. They always come few millions extra. In this case, on a quarterly basis, we really relook into those additional revenue coming and see whether we can assign the needed funds to police department for those three positions is going to be continuously. That logic, I am putting it here, yes, they are going to try, no matter what. If they are not getting that money, any extra additional revenue is coming, the first thing should be addressed, the Public Safety Police Department. That's my recommend, this is a budget season. How to handle, we can logically talk about it.
But are you proposing to make a change to this actual budget? Or are you just saying, as, as we go through next year's budget, if revenues come in higher than expected, we can absorb those?
My thought is not for the next year. By then, damage is going to be already done. We get the quarterly updates from our Finance Director. Every quarter, she's, you know, great to project, this is a projected, this is the almost actuals are coming. Any excess is coming. It has been excess all the time because we are very conservative. The funds should be addressed to those three additional officers, which they don't have a budget.
Okay, but what are you proposing as far as this budget?
Again, I don't know what to say it, you know, I don't want to say it, all those positions should be funded, but I'm putting a logic, how do we do that?
Well, if you want to fund those other three, other than salary savings, you're going to have to give us corresponding cuts in another area.
And it should be from an area that's recurring. So like, you know, like if you, if we had the slide up that you have in front of you of the other positions, you would find corresponding positions that you don't want to have.
So here is my other alternate. My first thing is going to be that additional dollars are coming from, predominantly from the South of 50 growth. Desmond, and you know, some of you may know the actual numbers, every month we are building almost 70 to 80 homes, give or take 50 to 70 homes every month.
Yeah, that's correct, actually 80 to 82.
80 to 82, so which means another 250 people coming every month to the South of 50. So they do have a need, growing public safety demand on that side. So the point I'm making here, if they don't have funds, yes, we have to go for our either contingency or the reserves.
Okay, but I'm not hearing that you're proposing any particular change right now?
I'm not, but I'm emphasizing police positions should be fully funded one way or another, not just squeezing in their little budget.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, any other changes that anybody wants to propose? Okay, I'm going to try to summarize this, and somebody can just say, so moved, and then we'll be able to go on, right? Okay. So we are looking for a motion to adopt Resolution Number 11210, a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2425 operating in capital budgets for the city of Folsom, the Successor Agency, the Folsom Public Financing Authority, and the Folsom Ranch Public Financing Authority with the following changes. Increase the council's travel and meeting budget from 17,000 to 35,000, and correspondingly taking, reduce the next year's contingency fund by $18,000. The second would be to, instead of using the 1.1 million from the unassigned fund balance for kids' play park renovation, use $800,000 and then put $300,000 toward trying to keep the landscaping services as close to where they are right now. And then also removing $1,650,000 from the capital improvement budget that was in there for Benevento Park. Did I capture it all?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any other discussion?
Before a second, I know you didn't cover the Thai item of the revenue increase goals.
Because that did not get support of a majority of the people here.
It's a Thai?
Yes, so it doesn't make it.
That's right.
Yeah. I'm going to withdraw my second.
Okay.
Madam Vice Mayor, may I, may I ask that you repeat the portion about the Benevento Park?
I thought we were removing the 1.65 million because there wasn't support to have it in there.
I thought the 1.6 is already in the proposed budget, and there's no majority support to take it out.
So it would stay?
She's just proposing a motion. I think that's.
Okay. That, that works for me, yeah. Yeah, that's true. Yeah, it's already in there, and there was no support to take it out.
Correct.
Okay, okay. So we have a motion by Councilmember Rodriguez.
I think you need to restate the motion then, because now it just shifted back.
Okay. So, so then the only two changes that we would be making, because they garnered a majority of support here, would be increase the council's travel budget from 17,000 to 35,000, taking that additional 18,000 from next year's contingency fund. And instead of 1.1 million from the unassigned fund balance going to kids' play park, only designate $800,000 and put the other $300,000 toward landscaping. No other changes besides that. Okay.
That's what I heard, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Rodriguez. Do we have a second? Well, if it fails, then it's the City Manager's budget. Correct?
Correct. And the council does have the option of agendas in a special meeting, continuing this item to a special meeting before the end of the month, if there's a call.
With 24 hours' notice before the meeting.
Okay.
If you're facing a 2-2 vote.
Here's, why don't we have a little bit more discussion?
Okay.
Because we definitely want to get this done. And I know that there, you know, there's the hope that it can all be unanimous. So, I think the biggest issue that the city facing is our crime issue. And one of my concerns, I did not bring that up, because I wanted to see how everything else played out. One of the concerns for me, which I stated two weeks ago, was that we're only funding three positions, and that there's six positions in the budget. And as my fellow council member mentioned, that means they're being required to cut from other areas. This issue is not, the crime is not getting better. I drove around two different days this weekend, well, I guess Saturday and Sunday, there's two days in a weekend, just to kind of really get a sense of how it was, and it's just not great. To ask our department to do. Um, to ask our department to do, and, and then on top of that, south of 50, as you well know, Vice Mayor Aquino, has been asking, and they have plenty of homes, to justify it for regular patrols. The chief mentioned two weeks ago that, um, from a question, I believe from you and, um, Mayor Mike, or Mayor Kozlowski, um, how many would it take to fully fund, or fully staff south of 50 and fund a hot team, which our, uh, community is crying out for? It would be nine positions. Um, so we're funding three and we put six in. I mean, I can, you know, so using emergency funds or the unassigned fund balance for some of these other items, um, and even the maintenance for the park, um, I can get on board for, um, and it's something I've advocated for. If we have excess reserves, we should be investing back into our community and tackling some of these issues. I can be on board with all of this. What I, what I would like to see then is a commitment and maybe a commitment through this budget, that we fund four officers, four positions, we actually fund four positions and authorize seven, knowing that it's going to take them at least probably six months to even get four, five. Um, but showing our commitment to them now in this budget, um, knowing that there's going to be increased revenue, um, we can, we can take it from the unassigned fund balance, but there'll be commitment, um, and then as revenue comes in, we don't have to then allocate it in a mid-year budget review, it's already allocated as it'll come in. Um, so I mean, if we can add that, address the concerns of our public, fund four officers right now, knowing that they can hire three more after that, then I, you know, I think I could be on board for everything as well. And then I would second it.
So, the propose that you're making is to add an additional police officer to what was proposed by the city manager?
Correct.
And you're proposing to fund it how?
Through the unassigned fund balance.
Okay. Councilmember Rodriguez, do you support that?
So, I'm not going to be here in the next budget. And, and I think that the six that were proposed, using three for the budget and three using, um, uh, salary savings was a, um, was a brilliant idea. It gives the police department six additional police officers. To take ongoing revenue from the unassigned fund balance...
One-time revenue.
To pay for some...
Right, 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 yes. To pay, to, to have an ongoing cost from the one-time, um, bucket, um, I feel like I would not be making a responsible, um, fiscally sound decision for the city, considering that I'm not going to be here next year to, uh, to deal with the consequences that may come from, you know, u-using, I, I, I don't support that.
So can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Not to challenge you, but just to, um, question, um, but, but you agreed, we all agreed to authorize 300,000 for the maintenance of parks from a one-time fund, and it's an ongoing cost. So, you're saying you're okay with 300, or are you saying you're okay with 300,000 for parks, but not 160 for a police officer?
That's just for this next year.
No, that's ongoing.
Yeah, I mean, I, I made that...
That's using, that's an ongoing, um, operation cost.
Which at some point we can...
Yes, but I, yeah, and I, I had made that point earlier, that, yeah, it's, it's, goes against our budgeting policies that we'd be using one-time money for landscaping, which is theoretically an ongoing cost, but it's not, it's, we can cancel that service.
Yeah. And, and that's a big difference for me to say, that we can cancel a service and say, well, just like we did, um, a couple months ago, we said we're going to go from weekly to bi-weekly. We're seeing that it's not, um, it's, it's, it's not proving to be, um, good use, um, we need more attention to our lawns, um, but to add an extra on, to add an extra personnel is much different because that, it'll be, next year, it'll be 160,000, but then the following year with COLA, it goes up and so it's...
So just, you know, we, we, and as rightly we should have, um, several years ago, we was, before I was on council, we authorized, I believe it was nine firefighters, um, you know, in a time when we were coming out of, um, you know, a difficult situation, um, and this, and now we're all, we're still only funding, we're only authorizing three funded positions in the police department. Um, so, you know, rather than continuing to catch up with the police department, um, we've been proactive with every other, or every other public safety department, but we continue to just try to catch up with our police department. And I guess that's where I'm, what I'm advocating for, is we've got to stop catching up. Um, we, we saw what happened this last year by, by not giving them, being proactive about what they needed. Uh, the chief has clearly stated, and so did one of his commanders when he presented, um, in February, what they need to tackle the problems that we're facing. I believe funding four officers in this budget is not too much to ask for, for what we're facing. Um, it helps every other department, it helps public works, it helps fire, it helps, um, code enforcement, it helps parks and rec, it, I mean, it helps everyone. So, you know, it's, it's one more officer that I'm asking for, that is going to be another 160, 165,000 dollars. Um, and I think that's pretty easy to, then, you know, as the revenue increases, um, we probably won't have to take it out of the unreserved, or the reserved funds, but I guess that's my logic.
Okay. Councilmember Chalamchirla, do you support using reserve funds to buy one more police officer?
I just want to clarify, uh, Councilmember Rorba, one more police officer, are we talking seven from six?
Yes. Funding one more, we're funding three. We've allocated enough money to fund three positions and we're authorizing them to hire six and use the cost savings elsewhere in their department to be able to pay for those other three, right? That's already been, we talked about that two weeks ago, the logic behind that. I'm saying let's authorize seven positions and fund four, so we still have the three on over hire, we're just authorizing four in the budget. So I'm just asking for another 165,000 in the budget to go towards one more officer.
Got it.
To get us closer to having full patrols on south of 50 and a complete hot team.
Right. Um, Madam Vice Mayor, I think I gave my opinion on this one, I think in my previous discussions. Um, we need to re-look into on our quarterly, our mid-year budget review, uh, probably not right now, digging into the reserves. My gut feeling is, we, as, as Desmond said, every month, we are building 80-plus homes. Every month, 250 people are moving in. So, either quarterly or mid-year, mid-year review, we probably may have to do religiously and then re-look into the police additional officers and other services as well, based on the growth. But right now...
You're, you're a no to the change he's proposing. Okay, and I'm also a change. Okay. So, we still have a motion from Councilmember Rodriguez for the two changes, increasing the council's travel budget, decreasing next year's contingency fund to fund that increase to the travel budget, and then, um, the kids' play park with the $800,000 plus $300,000 to landscaping. If nobody else will second, I will second it.
Can we add that, projections, goals? Yes, no?
No, that did not get a support from majority of the council. So you can vote against the budget if you don't, if you want to.
I mean, I know this is going to upset the audience, but can we have a five-minute recess? I just want to absorb everything. This is a big thing, passing a budget. Um, we, you don't have to.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we can't go, we can't talk about it, so...
Oh, I know.
Okay. I would prefer that we just, we got a motion and a second right now. I prefer we call the roll.
Okay. Councilmembers Chalamchirla?
It's very hard to say no. My vote is no, because we have to change the policies.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rorba?
I want to say that I appreciate, I don't know where I'm going yet, but I really, really appreciate all the staff, um, time in preparing this budget, all the times you got asked to come up and explain the same thing over and over again to us. Um, I definitely appreciate that. I might not show that on the dais all the time because my mind is continuing to think through things. Um, and so, I, I don't feel like I say it enough, but I just want to say that to all of the staff here, all the staff listening, in all departments everywhere, um, that I appreciate everything that you put into the city and to everything that you do. Um, you know, I don't know.
Okay.
And Aquino?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay. Thank you. That was a little more painful than I thought it was going to be, but I appreciate the...
But thank you so much again for, Sarah, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Managing that. Um, you allowed us to go piece by piece, which I appreciate. And also, um, I really appreciate that there was a lot of discussion and that also you were willing last week, or two weeks ago, to pull your motion so we could think through all of this and find solutions. I think this was a much better process, um, than, than I've been a part of. And, um, so I really appreciate the, all of the rest of my council members for allowing the process to happen, allowing the public then to have input after we had some discussions, um, and continuing to really care about the future of the city, I think. It was fantastic.
And can, can I just say, I, Councilmember Rorba, I, I really respect, um, what you just did, that going against what maybe some of the things that you requested and it didn't pan out, but that you are, um, willing to support this budget, um, going forward. So I just want to say that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay. We are now going to convene the regular meeting of the city council, or the joint city council, Folsom Redevelopment Successor Agency, Folsom Public Financing Authority, Folsom Ranch Financing Authority, South of 50 Parking Authority meeting. Would you please call the roll?
Um, Councilmembers Chalamchirla?
Yes, here.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
Aquino?
Here.
And Kozlowski's absent.
Call the first item, please.
Your one and only item on this special joint agenda is your consent calendar.
Okay. Um, I assume we do not have any speaker requests on this item. Do any board members have any questions? Councilmembers have any questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adjop to the consent calendar?
I'll go ahead and, uh, make a motion to move the consent calendar.
Yeah, I'll second on that one.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Chalamchirla?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes. So we will adjourn the joint meeting and reconvene the regular city council meeting. Um, are there any council requests for future items other than cost recovery?
Yes. Um, I, I would just like to, um, get an idea of when we're going to hear back from the economic development consultant on some of the work that they've done.
Just get in. Um, I think, um, Christine Brainard may be on the line, she's the project manager for that, but I think we're shooting for the fall.
Okay. As in, as in October, fall, or August?
Sometime between September and November.
Is there, is there a reason for the, I thought they were almost done, and I'm just asking for information.
I, yeah, the information I shared before is, it, we as staff feel like there's some significant gaps we need to work through.
Okay. Any other requests?
No, not right now, I think I may ask next, next meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. That takes us to city manager reports.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, the city of Folsom Waste and Recycling Division is implementing new waste collection routes to operate and deliver service more efficiently, beginning the week of July 22nd. Some Folsom households will see their waste collection day change. Affected residents will receive a notification by mail. Updated collection schedules will also be available on the city's waste collection app. The Folsom Community Development Department will update its user and processing fee changes for building and engineering services. The Folsom City Council adopted those revised fees at its May 28th meeting. Beginning July 1st, impact fees for all new construction projects south of 50 will increase by an average of 2.7% based on the construction cost index. Uh, this increase applies to all fees not paid before July 1st, and projects north of Highway 50 will not be affected by the increases. Uh, building and engineering fees will be adjusted beginning August 1st. Uh, starting September 9th, impact fees for all new construction projects north of Highway 50 will increase by 2.7%. And planning user fees will increase by 2.62%. Uh, the city of Folsom enforces, uh, strict penalties for illegal fireworks usage. And just so everyone understands, when you hear safe and sane, you know it's not safe and sane if it's aerial. So if you're in your neighborhood and you see anything in the sky, it is not legal. Um, so the Folsom City Council adopted a social host ordinance that levies $1,000 fines against property owners that either use or allow the use of illegal fireworks on their property. So if you're hosting a party and non-safe and sane fireworks are observed and reported, um, you're going to get a fine. Uh, calls for service increased dramatically on July 4th, and emergency response resources are stretched extremely thin. During the holiday weekend, use 911 for emergencies only, like an active fire injury or an immediate threat to people or property. And you can report illegal fireworks, um, by email at fireworks@folsom.ca.us or by C Click Fix, which I know many of you use. Um, the Free Friday Evening Concert Series continues at Folsom City Lions Park. Uh, bands play from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. Uh, June 28th is Peter Morgan, which is jazz. July 12th is Inner Soul, which is R&B, and July 26th is Modern Relics Rock. Um, so bring a picnic or purchase food and treats and enjoy yourself, um, at the concert. Um, the gallery at 48 Natoma hosts a free public reception from 68, uh, this Friday, June 28th, for the new forest floor exhibit. Um, the exhibit features moss art by Kafumi Kepler, botanical illustrations by Christine Jacob, and photography by Timothy Boomer, so be sure to catch that, it continues through August 29th. And then, um, while fireworks can be exciting for, um, us humans, they can be very frightening for our four-legged friends. Animal shelters across the nation report that July 5th is their busiest day of the year, as they receive a surge of disoriented, injured, and exhausted pets who fled from the startling noises the night before. Consider keeping your pet indoors, ensure all ID tags are securely attached to your pet's collar, and display your most current contact information. Don't forget to update your microchip registrations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Chalamchirla, anything, report out.
Quickly, uh, again, uh, I want to sincerely thank Elaine and all department heads and each and everyone who involved in the budget. I know it is tough and challenging. I'm doing my job as well here. It's not that I'm saying no. Let's be innovative, think outside the box. Sometimes, I worked throughout my life for government, 27 years. I tried my best wherever I was. Think outside the box. See whether we can make a difference. Let be the Folsom, the first city to make a, bring a change. So that's the only reason, uh, I, I, I said no on the vote. Uh, hopefully it will ignite the thoughts in the future, if I'm not here. And, uh, it is no mean I'm disrespecting any city staff or you're not working hard. So, I just want to close my comments. Again, thank you, city staff, for bringing the budget, it is very tough, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rorba, any comments?
No, I think I...
Okay.
Already kind of made them.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Uh, well, you know, it was, um, this actual budget was, it was great to see more people involved, engaged, and provide feedback than the prior years that I've been in, and so it is my favorite time of the year. Um, and there are so many events happening in the next couple of weeks, prior to rodeo with this Friday, the concert in the historic district, um, and then rodeo, and, um, yeah, looking forward to seeing you all there. Have a good evening.
Thank you. And I would just say, um, congratulations and thank you to Folsom Cordova Superintendent Sarah Kaligian, who retires June 30th. Thank you for her service to the district and our community the last seven years. And it is 8:59 and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.